Okay, Dave, what have you said?
325 Webster Road, Woodhall subdivision. Okay, 325 Webster Road. Butcoats is requesting sketch plan review associated with the proposed 12-block residential subdivision on a 12.7-inch parcel located in an R-1 single-family residential district under the code of Tom Webster.
Hi, just kind of pin up something here.
Okay.
Which you already have.
We would have much rather preferred you had smaller drawings here.
The State Department?
Smaller drawings are generally required, you know, 11 by 14 or whatever. I wish I had known this. Using the tablecloth.
Uh, thank you. My name, as you know, is Jack Beuholtz. Uh, I'm the site engineer for this project. This is a concept plan meeting. Um, and the project, the intent is to develop 12 lots on a 12.2-inch site at the northwest corner of Webster Road and Woodhall Road. Um, the site is heavily wooded. It's, uh, there are no wetlands or floodplains, no heathers waste. The soils are very uniform, uh, what we call blow sand. Uh, very uniform blow sand. We did eight test pits out there, all over the site. Everything is identical down to 10 feet. The, uh, we're proposing a private drive coming off Wood. I don't know if you can see, this is Webster Road, north is up. Village is down here, this is Woodhall, cemetery is here. We're proposing a private drive here to serve these seven lots. There's an existing driveway here which will be upgraded and maintenance access preserved for this homeowner back here for these two lots and these three lots would front directly onto Webster Road. We will have to do a homeowners association for these seven lots here. Typical house, the way we're proposing it, uh, we are proposing for this to, it's very wooded here. We're proposing to keep this wooded. The intent is to provide for the house and up to 50 feet behind it and up to 40 feet in front of it can be cleared. The rest has to stay wooded. Uh, there are a couple of reasons for that. One is the owner, developer, wants to keep this as a very wooded site. Thinks that the homeowners would like that. It also will reduce visibility from outside the side or between houses. And there's a third reason, which I'll get into in a bit. Of the houses, of the lots, it's a R1 zoning. These all would meet the requirements of zoning for set-back and size with respect, with exception of this particular lot. It's, uh, three inches too narrow for the zoning and it's about 5,000 feet lower than the area required. So, in order to develop this particular lot, which is the closest to the intersection of Woodhall and Woodhall and Webster, we would require to get area boundaries.
Sir, can you talk into the microphone?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. Can you repeat what I just said?
Please.
Yes. Uh, with the exception of one of the lots, this one here in the southeast corner, the other lots all meet the zoning requirements for area and lot size and setbacks, et cetera. This particular one is three inches narrower than required for its zone and 2,000 feet smaller in area than its 35,000 feet requirement.
I'm gonna interrupt you just a second.
Yes, sir.
You probably, because there's people here, I'm sure, a bunch of the neighbors. Can you just distinguish where Woodhall is?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Because you don't have it on the drawing, so.
Sure. It's hard to see, I guess. So, this is north. The lake is up there and the village is down here. This is Woodhall Road and there's a cemetery south of this. And this is, our site is here. So, it's northwest of the intersection of Woodhall and Webster Road. There are some, it doesn't front on Webster Road, uh, Woodhall Road with the exception of one piece in here. I, I think what I'd like to do maybe is jump into the comments from the staff at this point. And then I'll come back for a couple of things. Uh, so I got your comments, Josh. I did try to read you what your mailbox called. The first comment, I guess, is that we'll need to ensure cross-acceasement is in place for existing residential, affecting Webster Road. Yes, there is an existing easement for this parcel here, which is west of Webster Road. That's an existing driveway that will be actually upgraded. That, that easement will, will be maintained and kept for that parcel. The fire marshal requests dimension to be added to propose private drive and turn around to ensure that it's code. Yes, I think we've shown the width and we've designed this to make the fire code and uniform building code. We will concur with code in that. Should confirm with DOT that three additional curb cuts will be permitted. We've contacted, uh, the New York State DOT office, the Eastern District Office, Eric Williams and Dan McCusker, and they've indicated that this should be fine, but we'll have to go through the permit process for that. Engineering Department states project cannot feasibly construct without disturbing less, without disturbing, I think, I think they mean more than five acres during build-out. Uh, this is significant, uh, because there's something we want to do with storm drainage here that, uh, relies on the ability to keep the total disturbed area less than five acres. Now, the comment that was made, I would say, is an opinion, because the grading plan shows the disturbed areas here have been shaded and this is just under 4.5 acres. So, we're saying that we will stay under five acres and if the town requires, we will reduce the clearing behind the houses. We have shown these with a minimum of 40 feet cleared in front of each house and 50 feet behind it. You see, the 15 to 20 feet on each side. We can reduce that slightly if that brings more security or comfort to the engineering department, but we will keep this under five acres. And that includes, that five acre includes areas that won't really be touched, but will be turned into lawn, where trees may be taken, will be taken down. Includes driveways, utility trenches, and houses. A second comment was New York State DEC requirement for post-construction stormwater management must be included in, included in the design. This is not a DEC requirement under this circumstance. The New York State DEC has a provision for residential areas which are not tributary to 303D contaminated streams, and this is not tribute to those, where less than five acres are disturbed and less than 25% is impervious. We meet all those criteria. In that case, New York State DEC provides that you must provide erosion and sediment control plan, but you do not have to put in a stormwater management control for flow. Now, in my engineering report that I sent into the town, I looked at the standard DEC calculations with their software for the case of the existing pre-developed condition and as we proposed. And the flow difference, as we propose it, without a detention pond, is very, very slight. Uh, we normally look at the one, the 10, the 25, the 100-year storm. Just to give you an idea, the one-year storm runoff from this site today is zero. And one, the way I've designed it will be zero. The, the 10-year runoff for 3.6 inches of precipitation today is 0.4 cubic feet per second. After development, it will be 0.4 cubic feet per second. The 25-year will increase from .8 to .9 CFS and the 100-year from 1.8 to 1.9 CFS. These are pretty small flows for a 12-acre site. And the reason is because it's very wooded, it's very sandy, and it has a lot of leaf litter on it. So, very high in, uh, in, uh, permeability and the water tends to go through. That's why even though the site grades out this way, there are no deep swales here that would indicate runoff. And the information I sent in, I think you may have read, there would be big problems if we had to put in a detention pond. First of all, because you would have to discharge a grade here, that means we would have to build up the land here. We'd have to build up the land to be able to put in a detention pond with the type of drop that's required by New York State DEC for a detention pond. And that means we would have to clear the woods out and we would have to build up the property to do that. So, that's, that's one reason we would like not to do that. We really want to keep this as a wooded development. Let me go on with the comments here.
How, how, you're losing this program.
Yes, sir.
You're saying that the disturbed area is where the houses are going. That's impossible.
Why is that?
Why? Because you need to put utilities into the front of these yards?
Yeah, they're coming in along the driveways.
Yeah, okay, along the driveway, but not in the driveway. So, that means that's that much more disturbance.
Well, I have, we have calculated this to be under four and a half acres.
Well, I bet you did. But I still don't see how you can do that, because where the house is built, you can put foundations, cellars, basements, or down? Okay, so if you've got basements, where do you put your soil? Where do you put your excavation soil outside the house? You're showing the disturbed area is 24 foot by 70.
Tony, we are allowing about over 100 feet of depth and about 100 feet of width per lot, plus the driveway in our calculations. So, we have a lot of space here to work with. If you look in your grading plan, we show shaded the disturbed area, but we also show contours and we show where the houses and we show where the driveway is. And we have the ability to reduce the distance behind the house where the clearance is, if that's more appropriate. We've allowed 50 feet, you know, below than that. And we're still half, half an acre under. Now, half an acre is 20, about 20 to 1,000 square feet.
Yes. Well, you know what, as far as that aspect, I think I'd do that up to the engineers and have somebody figure that one out, because I, I just stand a hard time with that. Okay, well, why not? What would be the difference? What do we have to do? Do you have to get support reports?
In terms of?
If, if you're excavating and doing all the work on a site like this?
Yeah, if they exceed the five acre threshold.
Yeah, so by saying I'm only doing four and a half, I'm gonna guarantee you, when you go to do it, you can't do this in four and a half acres of disturbance.
Well, we would still have to do our weekly script reports and filings for DEC, but we would not have permanent, a permanent detention basin there for that. And we wouldn't be wiping out, you know, taking out all the forest here and raising the site to be able to drain into this pond so that we could discharge at ground level with a.
Does it always be a pond anywhere in here?
Well, we're proposing it cannot be.
Now, is that, is that kind of wet area in there at all? It's kind of wet?
Very, very wet.
It's very wet.
Not this year, but.
When you bring in 25 loads of dirt in one yard.
Wait, wait, we're not gonna start with it, okay? Please, be courteous and do it right. This was at PRC and it was discussed. In my opinion, the drainage based on highway department and so on is to the northwest.
Yes, it is.
Correct? Okay, all right. So, lot number 12, where is that? Lot number 12, yeah. In the northwest corner, my suggestion at the PRC was that should be considered for detention pond. I hear what you're saying. There's not a lot of flow, there's not a fist, there's not that, but I'm not thrilled with the drawing.
Well, I guess what I'm gonna ask you is.
This is chopped up, this is.
This feels like Frankenstein.
It's, it's a, it's a maze. Private drives going back?
Yeah.
Let's see, you've got one, two. Okay, what is lot number 11? Lot number 11 has a driveway coming in, okay? Just gotta figure this thing out here. This is number one, right? Then, he also has property next to it, to the east of it, correct?
Yes, there's a, yeah, there's a flag lot, if you like, to lot 12, which is to the east of lots 10 and 11.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Just think, consider to just make like four, five, six lots? Just standard neat complete lots as opposed to this?
When you say standard, do you mean like three times as much as money is required?
You'd up a little bit, not with all these driveways running around where the place is. Is there any considerations in developing it that way? I, I mean, we're jamming 12, 12 yards, 12 homes and yards a piece that just, I don't know. Will you guys speak up and help me out or think it up?
Your driveway, you know, it shows 12 feet of driveway for the long flag lots in front of the back. The gray line you're claiming is that's gonna be the only disturbance. How do you keep the six-foot area from not being disturbed between those two driveways? How do you keep this white space between all the? The reality is it's not gonna happen. It's not gonna get torn out. There's your half acre extra. You're over five acres of disturbance.
Well, I'll tell you what, then. What I guess I'd like to know is that.
The, the general layout of this thing is it's, I mean, I am surprised that there isn't more questions from the fire marshal for distance from the road back to the rear house. Will or not, it's acting like it's being sprinkled because it's so far away from any possible fire management.
The difference.
How are you gonna provide fire protection for these places? You know, is this, is this a one, one service coming into these things or individual services running back to these houses?
There is a dedicated, yeah, there will be a dedicated main coming to here and a height here. And then individual, individual services to each of the homes.
Can you stand on the other side so we could see where you're pointing? Sorry, thank you.
Yes, there's a private drive, there will be a, the water ferry will put in a water main here with a height here and individual services to each of these seven lots.
And what about the other lots?
These two are gonna be served from the water main here and these three will be served. There's a water main on the east side of Webster Road, which.
How, how is sanitary to handle that?
Okay.
Do you have follow for that to be able to grab it? Are you gonna be E1 stations for every one of these places?
All right, that was the next thing. What we want to do is, and in fact, this was recommended at a meeting that we sat at, Josh, that we put in grinder pump stations. That, that is what we would like to do. We would put in grinder pump stations and we would provide them, they would run next to each other. They're one and three-quarter inch grinder pipes. They would run along these areas here and down here and we would put them into a, a manhole. This would be a dedicated manhole and we would run a sewer along here to the existing sewer 800 feet to the west. And it would also provide sewer for any residents that wanted to hook up. That's the, that's the intent. Uh, we did look at gravity sewers. There is fall here that goes this way. So, a lot here can't really be done by gravity because the lateral leaning in the house has to be have four feet covered. So, it's down almost five feet. It has to go up through for several feet to get up here and then go to the manhole. And the manhole, I think, is only six or seven feet deep. So, we probably would be, if we were to put in, if we were to run it this way and put in a regular manhole with gravity system, we probably would be close to 20, 15 to 20 feet deep here. And if we put a pump station here, we probably would be about 20 feet deep at this point and then run a forest main instead of a sewer. So, the intent is to use grinder pumps, E1 or better, and the intent is to use dual, duplex ones, because there's a problem with one, the other one's still there. That would be our, that would be our intent. I saw what the sewer department wrote. Um, they didn't talk at our meeting, Josh, but I saw what they wrote. They don't like grinder pumps and I think the, the reason they don't is because they get the call, even though these are private, it's really not the town's system. The whole system would be private all the way to this manhole. But I think that was their concern stated here. But that is the way we would like to do it. And I guess what I'm asking is, we would like to be able to continue to work with engineering, sewer department and highway department to, I guess, work, work through this. I know that this particular approach for drainage is unusual. It's designed specifically for projects like this. It's not that common, but it is one that exists. And I think it's actually would be much better. I think the residents around it would like it better because the woods would be preserved. We wouldn't have point discharges, which I think is nice. We wouldn't have to bring in, I don't know, thousands of cubic yards of soil trucked in in order to fill the site so we could put a pond there that meets DEC requirements. So, I would like to think that the town would be open to us continuing to work with the staff to see if we could sell our case on this. And if we can't, then, then we'll have to find some other way to do this.
Why is that the individual driveway is moving back to those three parcels in that just moment?
These two? We just did it this way. I mean, I guess you could put one in, you could put a wider one in and bring in chocolate, I guess.
Yeah, that could, that could be just, you know, cross easements for one to the other.
You could make it wider too, then.
I've never seen in all my years, ever saw this site with an arrangement with a subdivision in town. I've had, who would you want to be in that environment for years? I knew, you only been there after two years.
Yeah, four to seven, yes. Well, Tony, it sounds to me like, um, there are a couple of engineering issues that we would have to work out with, with the town staff. And we understand that we'd like the opportunity to be able to do that, if the town would allow us to do that. And it sounds to me like the planning board has a bit of an issue with the number of lots here, based on the way, the way you were doing it.
Yeah, I thi, I think, number one, that, well, number 12 potash and stuff, uh, should actually be a detention pond back in there. I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I think that area is kind of moist and based on that, there's going to be drainage coming off all these roads. It's all impervious surface. The rooftops, the drainage from the downspouts, so on and so forth, there's, there's no smart sewers in here. So, this is all free-flow water. And you say you're only clearing five acres, which I, I also have to. That's a lot of water that could potentially be running, surface water. And I don't know, how, how is it down there? Is it quite underground too? I mean, there's some pumps? I don't, I don't know how the drainage.
I don't know, I don't live out there. All I know is we went out and we did test pits and we went down eight feet and what we were, what was kind of amazing to me was that the soil is uniform there. Where, where we did all eight, all over the place.
And was it, were you dug down eight foot? Was it dry eight foot down or was it?
It was dry, there were no, no deposits, there was no, it was water. Now, that's when we were there.
That was last?
Excuse me, are we gonna have a chance?
No, 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 excuse me. Everybody's waiting till, you know, let me, let me get something straight here. This is not a public hearing tonight. It's just a concept. Public hearing would be the next one, the one there. I understand you all have concerns and we do respect that. We're here. We will give you a chance to come up and speak. That we will do, but please, just bear with us to get to that point, okay? Thanks. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, um, like I said, I'd be lucky to be able to work with the town. You know, we can, uh, we can go back and look to see if we might want to eliminate a lot. Even if we don't need a pond, maybe we'll eliminate a lot. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll eliminate lot 12 or make this all lot 12. The idea of a detention pond kind of suggests that you have to get all the water to it. So, that means all the water that kind of percolates in here, you've got to put in storm sewers and run it all to this place and have one point.
Isn't it only a sort of normal subdivisions in luck?
Yes, and they normally have a defined outlet. We normally have that here.
There is none?
Well, there is a lower area here, but there's no swell. So, and the reason for that is because of the soils that are here and the fact that it's heavily wooded and it's covered with, uh, leaves too. So, it has a lot of, uh, absorptive power on this.
Okay, so maybe you need to do is check with, check with the highway department and see if there is any, uh, the possibility of draining off of that site, just if we need. I don't know. Maybe we, maybe you're right. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I mean, if I were this, there's a large lot here. If I were this lot, and the woods pretty much end right about where the lot is. If I were this person, I don't think I would want to see somebody put a big pond here, take out, take out almost all the trees and fill this whole half of the site or more. I don't think I would want to see that. I don't think if I were a resident, I would want to see people truck, see truckload after truckload of earth come in to try and raise this site. I don't think I would want to see a point discharge where there wasn't one before. This, I know this is, uh, it's not a typical site. I just feel that it's more environmentally sensitive and it's more aesthetically sensitive, I would say pleasant, than putting in a large detention pond here.
Well, to be more environmentally sensitive, I'd cut it in half with the newer houses. That would help a whole lot too, don't you think? You know, if you reduce.
I mean, yeah, obviously we didn't develop, that would be the most environmentally sensitive.
I know, but we're not saying that this would be the case, sir.
Okay, well, I, I think we can take away that, probably speaking for the board because you're heading your DRC meeting, I suppose, so I think there's a, there's a feeling that maybe there's too much development here. Again, I would just like to be able, Josh, to work with your staff people here to see if we can come to some accommodation on this. The sewer is a big issue and the drainage is a big issue. If we can resolve those two, I think, uh, everybody would be happy. That's all I have. I'd be very happy to answer any questions.
It's still what you're doing, but I do understand what you're doing with this layout. It's, it is a unique approach to do this.
Yeah.
To me, like, maybe so kind of do it, is all. Isn't it simple just driveways going up into the northwest or?
Hey, I live in Marston. I, I see driveways that are a thousand feet long.
No, I, I realize, but having a tree like that, just visually it looks odd.
I think.
The odd man point, the approach of having the, the flag parcels doing downs where they have, they have common driveway, I think that's a good way to do it as opposed to having isolated parcels with crossline easement on each one's, the flag lot.
I, I like your idea of that, sharing driveway.
I mean, I can see, um, the way, the reason that's so unique and if it truly does meet the DEC standards, there is a way to control during this construction to make sure it's below the five acres. And then it is an approach that preserves the trees and the wooden nature of the area.
Right.
It is a little deceptive looking on the drawing. You usually always have the impression that everything's gonna be cleared later, but there is quite a bit of green space maintained on it. It's not gonna be as thick as it is now, for sure.
I think that.
If you do increase the runoff area, I would take a closer look at the runoff calculations because intuitively I'm not seeing that as being so much being the same. Just because the amount of asphalt and blueberry and, and I understand, yes, you got trees and you got leaves on the ground and that gives you a different scene than if you're doing open field or something to the north. And I kind of, I have seen that argument before where they say that development's actually better off in fertile lands. That's not really the way, that's not the intent. As long as that stuff truly does meet the DEC standards, it is a, a unique approach to save trees. There may be ways to make it more efficient too, beyond what was here. So, you're actually distributing less on maintaining the same number of houses. It does, it looks like a lot of houses run a lot. The only lot, like you're saying, though, that has a drainage on it is this one parcel up off of the road. I understand why it's that shape because it fits the shape of the lot nice to it. I understand why it's that shape because it fits the shape of the lot nice to it. But that's not the reason it's that size.
Right.
So, you don't have a weird flag running down with that.
And this one, this, these lots here are actually used more than the forty feet in front because of drainage requirements here. And that's all factored in the four and a half acres.
Yeah, firstly, we don't, I shouldn't say that, we, town staff reviews all the drainage and so forth. From our standpoint, I think it would be a better help to have some other kind of visual to tell us where is the drainage actually going on. And when I look at the contours, even the proposed ones you have for the pads of the house, it's not that much higher than the surrounding areas. That's how you're limiting the amount of filling disturbance on it, which you're building houses almost a trade for what's back there.
Well, the finished floor, for example, here, the finished floor is at three twenty-nine and the next contour out here is three twenty-seven. So, I mean, the garage itself is probably a little over one percent slow drag, but the house is quite a bit more. You know, we provided that sixteen inches from the garage up to the first floor, make sure the garage is drained away too, I think.
I just want to put our understanding for everybody, where, where is the drainage going to go? Where does it go now?
It will continue, it will continue to go the way it goes now.
Does it ultimately tie into the stream?
I mean, I think it goes this way, I don't really know. It's not defined, I don't really know exactly. It must end up over here someplace.
Yeah, see, that's the problem. See, where does it go? We know where it will. I can, I can.
This is my basement.
You brought it into my property.
Yeah.
I have a stream across the back of my property.
Okay, hold on, hold on a minute. We could do is have, maybe have the highway department check feasibility of needing the pond first of all. I'm just guessing that we should have a pond based on the number of units and so on and so forth. We'll leave it up to them to see if the water has a place to flow. All right, you know what we'll do here? Again, just repeating, it isn't a public hearing and obviously the people are concerned and we're concerned, I don't know how you feel about it too. So, if you want to come up, just give me one or two time to come up, just keep it short. Give us your name and address and, just in due peace, who wants to go first? You want to go first?
Sure.
Because that was easy, she was already up.
My name's Glory Reed, twelve sixty Wood Hall Road. You said that you don't live in Webster, correct, or in the area? We brought in twenty-five ten wheeler dump trucks full of dirt because it's wet. We dug our fence posts down six inches, water comes up, it's wet.
Where do you live?
We, twelve sixty Wood Hall.
Here's the corner house right here.
This is the corner house.
Good.
With the second point.
So, you do the second line there?
Yep. We have a special sump pump put in because it's wet. For him to say that it's not going to cause problems for us and not put anything in for us as far as retaining pond or anything like that, just building back there, it's ridiculous.
Okay, so here's what you, basically, you're saying that your area is wet, that's the second one?
Absolutely wet, absolutely wet.
It brings on force, right?
Okay. It absolutely can't because our yard in the back goes up like this.
So, you're giving us your idea. And let me, let me get a few more people.
Okay, and one more thing is the traffic that it's going to cause. Why aren't they coming in, two fifty is already busy, why aren't they making the main entrance coming off of two fifty instead of bringing all the traffic down Wood Hall?
Well, it's covered out of both, both sides actually. Probably equal load of both ways. One, two, three, four, five, we're coming off in there.
Seven on Wood Hall and five on.
Yes, sir. Hi, Mike Porchette. I live right here at twelve fifty Wood Hall. And I've been there about ten years and it's been wet every year except for this year. Came and bought your yard and some of the spots along the property line. And, you know, I don't know where all the animals are going to go. We've got fox, you know, rabbits, deer. Every year you see this stuff, you see turkeys.
Turkey.
They're going to be gone.
Yep, understand.
Webster.
Understand though, that, that part of it, we understand, we fully understand, but that's out of our control. Because bottom line is, a person owns property and it's developed.
What they want.
You can't tell them they can't do it, you know? Best we can do is get the best we can get out of it. So, the garden wildlife, totally understand what you're saying, but we can't control.
All the farms are gone.
Yep.
All the woods are leaving. All the livestock.
It's unfortunate, but that's, you're right.
And if it comes down to the money that he wants to make on the property, you know.
They'll all go in and buy it.
I think that we all go in, at least I will. And I'd buy up the pieces behind me, to the side of me, whatever it would take, what money is taught, because I'm sure that's what he's doing this for.
Yep.
That's always, that's always an option by neighbors, is to purchase the parcel.
I would be willing, so.
That's the only way you could stop doing that. So, if you guys want to discuss that room yourselves, I mean.
Many of us have.
Work with him.
Yeah.
We've tried to contact him, but.
If you guys have a couple of comments you want to give us, uh.
I'll go because I'm up on the other end.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, just to represent the other side, right on my Brian written house. Brian written house on the three oh seven Webster Road, so I'm right here. And just to echo everybody's comments, it's wet, right? I brought over thirty yards of dirt in my backyard last year because it's constantly a pond of water, right? So, to say that, that, you know, there's runoff and whatever your calculations are, it doesn't runoff, it sits there, right? And you're, I agree with you. It's loomed, it's sandy, sandy loomed back there, but it doesn't, it doesn't drain, it doesn't drain away, you know? And it's, and again, all back here, we're proposing to build, it's all, it's all wet back there. So, I mean, you say that you don't need to do something for the, for the water, I mean, it's just the same thing. Okay, that's, you know, and you're worried that if you build there, where's that water shot going to come? To me?
Well.
Or me?
Whatever they do in the development, then part of the program for the developer is to show how he's containing the water, to know when the water's coming off of the property than what currently flows up with the, that's generally done by detention ponds to collect it for the direct spat without flowing all over the site.
Yeah, Brian's pumps sound wonderful too.
Yes, sir.
Everybody's going to have a major drive to do this. Over here someplace. And every house has had a sump pump.
Get nearer than Mike, he can't hear you.
Every house, and I make some drive, I have a sump pump. The one next to me used to have two sump pumps and they're all the way through August. So, I mean, it's wet, wet. And I believe that site was originally, it was considered by the Webster Fire Department for the northeast quadrant house.
Yes.
I think you walked away with because it was wet. At least that's what I heard. No, man, that was, that was conclusion I could make. So, I mean, I believe when you did your test, obviously, it was dry. But every place, every year, the sump pump's running. And so, there, I was like, you could say that the water's been flowing more flesh, and that's right towards the new house, which is probably a half mile away from that.
Okay. Appreciate it. All right, just, we got one message, there's a lot of water over there. So, move on with something else else. Enlighten us.
So, my name is Steve Wright, I live at three oh five Webster Road, and we own a sixteen acre parcel that's adjoints this whole thing up in here. And I've lived, I've lived in here since I was, you know, probably almost fifty years between, I used to own three oh seven, I own this one. And one of the things that we have hit constantly is water issues with sump pumps running heavy water. The other thing, as far as minerals, when I built this house, I had to put in a fourteen thousand dollar septic system because I had mineral deposits that hurt, but I had mineral deposits at high levels, so I had to go the.
Raise fill?
Raise fill in that area. So, mineral deposits here are an issue. And the other thing, if anybody would like to take a walk right in here, where I mow this, because I keep the field mowed, and then I can get through this area here where it's wet about twice a year. And last year I couldn't mow it at all, this year I was able to get through it. So, definitely, in my opinion, needs to have some kind of water retention storm plan, not only for, I don't need any more water coming my way because I, it's wet anyway, but for everybody else that's in here, there needs to be a spot to hold this water. Because as you talked about, Tony, between the driveways, runoff from all the houses, everything else, it's got to block somewheres. And right now, if you look back in this area, right back in here, this is all pretty low down in here. And, you know, our, my concern is we're just going to create a situation we've got now just going to make it worse. So, I'd like to have you consider that as you go through the concept plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, gentlemen, you have.
Yes, please.
So, I'm Jeff Mucha, I'm at twelve forty, I own these nine point seven acres.
Jeff Mucha, last name?
Jeff Mucha.
Mucha, okay.
So, I'm going to be the wonderful gift of additional water coming my way. Okay, currently, you're welcome anytime to come on my property, run tests, take a look. We're talking about water, water, water. I have a stream running through the back of my property currently.
Where?
It runs probably right through here on a diagonal heading toward the mainstream. It's a, it's a, it's a stream that probably runs better than six months a year, runs across that. We can walk together if you'd like, Tony, but take a look, depends on what time of year you're coming. But I have standing water on my property, and it takes about five days to drain after a big rainstorm. So, in terms of fast drainage, it doesn't happen. Okay, I've been there since two thousand and thirteen, so I've been there nine years. The other, the other issue is I have a sump pump that runs three seasons, spring, summer and fall. I have a backup siphoning system in case power goes out, in case I have another issue, because I've had my basement filled with water twice. I have a backup sump pump to plug in in case that one goes while the siphoning system's working. I'm not serious about not having another basement, basement issue. So, in terms of standing water and drainage, you really need to reevaluate that situation because it's significant. And you're not just hearing it from one person, you're hearing it from everybody here.
So, when should I come out and see that stream?
I have my business card here.
Yeah.
Because I'd love to talk to you outside of this. I tried to buy it once, I was outbid, won the bid, but I'd love to talk to you about buying this land back. Okay? And is it all of it or a portion of it? I'm interested.
But is the stream running these days? Have I already bought it out today?
Yes, I'm here.
Let, we, schedule a time, you and I can walk back there together, all right? I bought knee-high boots, the first, the first day I was walking the land because I ruined a few pair of shoes. And now I walk back there all the time with my, my rubber boots and there's a stream. Again, it doesn't run, it doesn't run at all year long, but it runs, you know, a good portion of the year.
I will definitely come.
A good portion of the season. And I have a well on my property as well. I have tons of lawn. And my, my lawn care person, he's full-time in Webster, and he says, I have the wettest lawn that he's never cut in Webster. It's, it's a sponge. Thank you.
Okay, we do have, we're our few comments, I think you've got a bunch of comments. We do have a few comments, I'll just go through them quickly. These were emailed in. This one is from three twenty-five Wood Hall Road. As the owner of three fifteen Webster Road, please address my egress, water and sewer. Also, what about the impact of wildlife trees and so forth? Any trees being left? Well, we could pretty much address that. Another one was from Maisy.
Was that a comment from three fifteen?
Uh, she's, the address, Valerie Avalone, three fifteen Webster Road.
We're here.
Okay, so you wrote this then, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Your phone.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
All right. I'll keep you.
Yeah, but, let me, let me finish reading these two, then we'll have to deal with it. This one here, this is your phone, please do not build on this land, my dirt is already flooded, we're going to build up the land behind my home, it will be wet, the more you destroy the woods next to the house, where the wild animals even be, they stay in my area. There's a stream past the road, oh, Spanish cemetery across the road. And I think it's completely inappropriate to have construction go ahead for months, even years, while people are attempting to peacefully ruin their losses. And this is one of those, okay, those are the two that we had regarding that. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
My name is Bob Burquid, I live at seven hundred Lake Road, Webster, resident of my life.
Bob, take the microphone back.
Take the mic, Bob. Anyways, I represent Bob and Valerie, they're at three fifteen Webster Road, and that's either on a two acre parcel and they're on, well, they're on septic. So, any disturbance of that will be a real problem. But I, I just want to get two things in perspective. First of all, I hope the developer doesn't run away. We need him because we need this problem resolved. And the way you get these problems resolved, drainage, take care of. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's rocket science, you just go downstream and pick up a low point and bring your, it just swells piping and drain the area. It is wet. And it's that simple. So, and I trust you, this planning board, you guys are great, you know what you're doing, and I'm sure that you follow whatever has to be done to ensure it happens. So, I think these objections can be overcome, but we have, we have to need the assurance that we will get proper drainage of water out of that area because it is, it is wet. Myself personally, I used to build houses as a contractor. I mentioned Maestol, next to Ranger Swayze, I represented them, I know their problems very, and yeah, it's a wet area. I think the developer could probably take care of it, but we'll look to this planning board to make sure that it's done properly. Other than that, you don't see anything, I know it's a sketch plan. So, here are the, Avalon's been living at this location for several years, and now we're going to be, we have all these houses around us, and it's a shock, let's face it, it is. So, and other than that, I'm likely to take in more of your time. Welcome to Webster, don't go away because we need your developer to help pay for this stuff.
Thank you, thanks, Bill. I'm drawing, we've got your set of drawings, but you, for sketch plan, you're supposed to have totals on it too.
Well, there are, they're on the drainage.
Are they, I don't have any, I don't have.
Maybe the privacy. They're very, very.
Can you see them? You'd be able to see them out there on the smart. You could see the, from both, the ones are solid, but the existing ones, uh, the existing ones are bad. And throw, keep looking here. These have the total on them.
Steel through the, very, very, very.
I see.
They're far.
You can't, I don't know where this.
Three two five.
But that's not acceptable. That's, doesn't show us anything.
Nothing at all.
The only reason I know that the drainage is low on the north, east corner was, northwest corner was because of the highway department playing down, saving that water, that's the low area. And that's why I suggested that. All right, anyways, yes, Bill?
Hi, I'm Valerie Avalone, I live at three fifteen Webster Road. So, I am the property that would be, as you come down this, this has been my egress for years, we've been out there over thirty years. As you come back here, I've got a house and we've got a separate building here for our garage. This whole area goes underwater and it ponds way back in here a lot. I mean, big deep pond. So, you have a lot of problems with water there. We've had water in the basement, we've had to do all sorts of things to try and alleviate that, but there's all. But there's also water that comes down both sides of the driveway and sits too. So, I mean, there's a good portion of the year that we can't even mow this side of our yard. And even this whole back section, we can't mow.
That's what I agree.
No. It comes right up to the woods, but some of it is woods and that's all wet. The woods on both sides next to these two properties are full of water. And not now, but they are in the spring.
I have seen water.
Yeah. So we're proposing bringing this in. Are we doing an egress, throw it all the way down or only partially? Are we leaving me?
They're, they're shows, on the drawing, they're showing some easement going over there.
It is an easement, yeah.
That driveway would remain, but this is going to be finished, this part.
Only up to there. So then on garbage day, you're going to have all these garbage cans that we all have to drag up with very small space here too. Just so you're aware of that, that's going to really be filling up the front of that. Because there's usually only room for mine too when I bring them up. Now you're asking all these others to come up.
Those too.
Yeah. Okay?
And we'll be wired.
Um, I'm on a well. What is this going to do to my water with all this building? That's the only access I've had water for over thirty years. It's good water, but that's all I have. Once you start digging and doing things, what's going to happen? And when they were going to originally do the fire hall, they were going to do a big pond over here. They knew they had to have a retention pond. So I'm very concerned with my septic, with my well, being surrounded.
With, with your, with your well, did you want to keep the well or did you... If they ran a water line to the property, I would...
If they ran a water line to my property or hooked me up, I'd be more than happy to have it.
Okay, that could be something.
They could put storage in there?
Well, you do have access from this pipe over here, on Webster Road.
Right, but that has to come across Webster Road, which is...
As will all these.
Right. But you're, you're going to be bringing it back and bringing it all the way back because you're really disturbing my property a lot. Probably more than anyone else within this whole project.
What, what'd you have to do? Did you have to bore under the road to get over there?
Yes.
The water borer actually does that.
Yeah, okay.
And that's a state road.
So that brings it to your property, then you run your water main in to your site.
Well, what we're doing here is we're doing individual water services. And this would be another individual water service. Probably a two inch because of the distance.
Yeah.
And also my gas line comes right down. So you're cutting across my gas line to come into here. So those are the major issues I have with it.
Do you know if your, your easement has any restrictions on development or property easement?
I don't know.
No. No restrictions.
All right. I think we've determined that there's a water issue there.
I think we all agree on that.
Yeah.
Could I make a comment on this? I know it's going to take a lot of your time, but...
Yeah, no, go ahead.
What I'm hearing is these people have water problems and they actually drain onto our site. If we put in a pond here, unless we're allowed to put a deep channel in across multiple properties, which I don't think the town would be willing to force that. We'll be, in order to put a pump, we're going to fill all this area. We're going to take the trees out, we're going to fill all this area. And these areas, these lands that drain, that drain onto here may have more difficulty draining onto our property. Just be aware of that. This will not solve their groundwater problems.
You drain onto us, not the other way around. You drain onto us. I can walk you in the back and show you, you drain onto us.
All right, just no door, how about some outside, please, guys?
I, I'm just looking at the comments.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make that point. Developing this, no matter what we do, we're not going to be able to solve your groundwater problems. Just be aware of that. And if we are going to put in a pond, it's either going to involve some easements and deep channels or pipes across private property downstream, or it's going to involve filling...
Yeah, I heard you say that.
Okay.
Let's, let's, you can review it and see what's possible, what feasibility of running it up. My thought, I mean, I could go anywhere I suppose, but lot twelve, because it's in the corner that's to back in, would be a spot for it, but might be eleven and twelve, I don't know. But also, I think Josh knew, right, the highway department, review that also, see where that water drains. If there's any kind of a delineation in there with swale or anything going out.
I...
Where the destination of the water would be at the end, I don't know.
Pipe could be part of that.
All right, I think it's something that needs to be investigated though before...
I agree.
...anyone with this. Any, any other drawings you bring in? Just bring in the one by, one by seven, I guess, the swell.
Uh, you just have to mean until pre-linering or...
I'm sorry?
Until pre-linering, you're going to have...
Yeah. What you need to have, Josh, you should have gotten...
Yeah.
They prefer you to weaponize.
Okay.
Yeah, you will need full drawings for the engineering department.
Yeah.
But for board members and stuff, we don't need really big sheets on this. Just give us the small ones.
Yeah, okay.
Save a couple of your creative time. I think we're trying to shore up many houses.
But it's kind of... Yeah, definitely change the... It should benefit the neighbors as well.
What's that mean?
Drainage should be, I ask no question.
That's a good comment.
Normally we're...
Issue with the well. I don't know whose responsibility that would be, if that is either running, possibility, who's going to say that it isn't going to affect the well? How deep is the well?
How deep is your well? I don't know. Yeah, I'll take, take a look and see how deep mine is.
The reason, reason I'm saying is because if, if there's a possibility of this development interfering with the well, then it seems me that responsibility should go back to the development to make sure it doesn't damage your well or, you know, cause, either cause it to dry or, or to contaminate. At that point, they need to put a line back in there. Cause that's something a little older, we'll deal with that too.
Just real briefly, I mean, I know he said that he's not going to fix our water problem. I'm not looking to have him fix my water problem. I don't want it worse.
Yeah, I've got you.
You know what I mean? That's, that's the biggest thing. Right, we've all, we've all learned to deal with what we've got.
No matter, no matter how we develop, no matter how this development goes, the bottom line is when, when it comes in and it's at a stage of a final approval for a subdivision, they have to show where the water is collecting, in other words, like a pond, and how much water is flowing out of there. Can be no more than it was flowing off there on the original site. But now it's contained, so in other words, some of you had a house that backed up to it, to the west side there. Yeah, there you go. See that there, we have to be shown where the drainage off the lot would go towards the driveway, towards the road, towards detention. So that's all down the road with this stuff. First of all, we got to be doing what fits that. Makes sense? Okay? Okay, I guess that's it then.
Well, thank you for your time.
Okay.
I learned a lot and I appreciate your input. We're going to look into this and hopefully work with you to do results.
Yeah, we'll work with you to do results. No, you don't want to look at the town.